Joint session, legislature come to order. Senator Long moves to dispense with the reading of the roll call of the Senate, without objection. Speaker Pro Tem Walt Lejeune moves to dispense with the recalling of the roll of the House of Representatives, without objection. The President appoints on the part of the Senate the following members to escort the Governor: Senator Cullum, Senator Luno, Senator John Smith, Senator Gaddy, and Senator Price. Speaker of the House appoints on the part of the House of Representatives members to escort the Governor: Representative Jackson, Terry Brown, Just Claire, Hilfertie, and Shexnada. You please perform your duties. We would like to welcome to the chambers some statewide elected officials who are here, all doing an outstanding job for the people of this state. On this side is a former member of this body, Treasurer John Schroeder. Lieutenant Governor Billy Nungessen. Commissioner of Agriculture Mike Strain. Ladies and gentlemen, the Governor of the great state of Louisiana, Honorable John Upon completion of the prayer, you all will remain standing for the presentation of the colors, the Pledge of Allegiance, and the singing of the National Anthem. Reverend Brady Whitten, Senior Pastor of First United Methodist Church in Baton Rouge, would lead us in prayer.
I want to thank you all for your service, and it's my privilege to pray for you and the work that's before you. Let us pray. God of grace and God of power, these men and women called to serve our great state gather here today with a mighty task to accomplish. They hail from different parishes, different parties, different faiths. They represent different constituencies, bring different experiences, and have different opinions. But they are here for one purpose: to make the best decisions they can for our beloved state of Louisiana. Lord, we confess that our knowledge is limited, but yours is limitless. Our resources are finite, but yours are infinite. Our ability to see a way forward is clouded, but your insight is clear. And so, Lord, we confess that we need your guiding hand. The task before us is great. We need your power, no more, no less. And so I ask that you move in the hearts and minds of those who will welcome you this day. Lord, grant wisdom, give insight, create a spirit of cooperation, help these men and women make decisions that honor you, wise decisions, good decisions, decisions they and our state can be proud of. And though the decisions they make will surely be hard ones, let them be decisions that are rooted in the desire that they have to serve the good of all people across this state. In the end, Lord, that's why we're here. That's what this is about: to better the lives of the people of Louisiana, and to serve our state with union, justice, and confidence. And I pray these things in the name of my Savior, Jesus. Amen.
The Louisiana National Youth Challenge Program of Aguilas Long Center in Carville will present the colors. which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Johnny Ballance from Baton Rouge will sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars threw the perilous fight? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave?
It is my distinct honor to present to you the Governor of the great state of Louisiana, Honorable John Bellinworth.
Mr. President, Mr. Speaker, Members of the Legislature, honored guests, and my fellow Louisianans, I want to thank the young lady cadets from the National Guard Youth Challenge Program for presenting our colors today. And I want to recognize Brother Brady Whitten, who is at the Methodist Church here in Baton Rouge, but he was at AMIT at one time not so long ago, and he did a great job praying for us and for our state. And then Johnny Ballance, who did such a great job with the National Anthem. Thank all of you all very much for being here. And I also want to recognize my wife, Donna, and my kids and my son-in-law, and thank them for joining us today as well. Thank you, Donna. Before I begin, as you may have noticed as you traveled to Baton Rouge, the Louisiana and United States flags are flying at half-staff to remember the seventeen precious lives that were lost at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Florida last week. This was an act of pure evil, a parent's worst nightmare. And I know, just as you are, Donna and I are praying for the families of the victims, the survivors who must deal with the aftermath of this senseless violence, and also for our country. No child should ever have to fear for their life within the walls of their school. So if you would, if you would join me in a moment of silence as we remember the seventeen students and faculty members who lost their lives last week. Thank you. Now, good evening, everybody, and welcome back. Some of you haven't been counting, so I'll tell you, this is the fifth time I've called you in this special session since I've been Governor. But if we all work together, I'm optimistic that this certainly could be the last. Every step we have taken in preparation for this session is to ensure that we get the job done, and that we get it done right, and we get it done now. I'm optimistic that we can do it. That optimism is based on the feedback that I've received from many of you who share my concern about what will happen if we don't address the fiscal cliff. But more importantly, you share my belief that Louisiana's brightest days are ahead, if only we can come together to solve the problems that have plagued our state for years. Last fall, I traveled the state and had over thirty meetings with business leaders and elected officials. The message was the same in Lake Charles as it was in Alexandria and everywhere else. Business leaders and local officials are tired of the endless financial battles. They want us to stabilize our budget once and for all, reform our tax code so that it is predictable and fair for all Louisiana citizens and businesses, and create a structure that grows with our economy so that we can get out of our own way. The problems we face are not new. The fiscal cliff, as you know, is the result of more than $1.3 billion in temporary revenue set to fall off the books on June 30th. And yes, that revenue was supposed to serve as a bridge to long-term tax reform. That was the promise we made to the people of Louisiana. Had we stuck to that plan, we wouldn't be here today. Instead, in the 2017 fiscal session, the last ordinary fiscal session before the fiscal cliff, not a single bill, not one, to fix the cliff based on your own task force recommendations, even made it out of the Ways and Means Committee. And although I'm disappointed that it's taken this long to solve the problem, I hope that you will find motivation in how much better off Louisiana is today than we were the first time I called you here two years ago. Back then, we had inherited a $1 billion shortfall that had to be addressed in just three months before the end of that fiscal year, and a more than $2 billion shortfall for the next fiscal year. Today, I'm simply asking that we replace, not raise, but replace a portion of the revenue that is scheduled to fall off the books. In fact, with more than $1.3 billion in revenue falling off the books, according to the House Fiscal Office estimates, I think we can summon the courage to replace $994 million to fully fund TOPPS, stabilize support for higher education, and adequately fund health care and other critical priorities. We've already seen what's possible when we budget honestly and responsibly. In fact, as some of my Republicans and friends, and some of my Republican friends in the legislature have said, our current budget is the most honest, responsible one they've seen in ten years. For the first time in nearly a decade, we've been able to stabilize funding for higher education. Working together, we fully funded TOPPS. We saw mid-year surpluses rather than deficits and destabilizing mid-year cuts. And just look at how this has changed the future for higher education. The UL system, our largest, has seen a dramatic increase in admission requests for next fall. UNO, for example, has seen a more than 20% increase in requests for admission. The LSU system has seen a 38% increase in admission requests for next fall, and for out-of-state students, it's almost a 70% increase. Our community and technical college system is growing and looks to add 5,000 students next year. People, that's what success looks like. We've come a long way since 2016. We addressed that shortfall by taking a balanced approach of revenue, strategic spending cuts, significant savings, and economic growth. Had we not made spending cuts, we would be talking about a cliff that is much larger than it is. Almost all of the revenue that was passed to eliminate that shortfall is going away on June 30th, and it's nowhere near $2 billion. However, someone argued that these weren't real cuts. But just ask a student who didn't receive his or her full TOPPS award last school year because you chose to fully fund the program for only one semester. Ask our hospital partners who've seen cuts in state support for the last two years. Ask our higher education leaders, who, to my great disappointment, saw less state general fund support in 2016. Those cuts, and many others that we made, were real, and they impacted people's lives in a very negative way. But the real question is not what we have done until now. Rather, it is what are we going to do going forward? I know there are a few of you who believe that I should not have called this special session. There are even a couple of you who believe that there is no fiscal cliff. There are some of you who acknowledge that there's a cliff, but you don't want to fix it. Well, you're entitled to your opinions, just like I am, but none of us are entitled to our own math. According to the Revenue Estimating Conference, the amount of the fiscal cliff is $994 million. That represents the current forecast difference of state general fund from this year to next year. For those of you who acknowledge that there is a cliff and propose that the only solution is to make spending cuts, as I've told you before, I can respect that position. I disagree with it, but I can respect it. But what I cannot respect is for you to take that position and then also insist that you are not the one who has to make the tough and painful choices. Instead, some of you want to put those decisions off on others. If you want to reduce government spending, propose the specific cuts and put your name on them. But let's be honest about one thing: when you say that government should spend less, what you really mean is that government should do less. Again, that's a completely acceptable position and a debate that we should have, and we should have it in public. But it would mean reduced opportunities for Louisiana's kids to go to college. It would mean reduced opportunities for health care for the neediest and most vulnerable among us, and it would mean reducing law enforcement's ability to do its job, and it would mean inadequate funding for a host of other critical priorities. As you might recall, last year, my friend Senator Jack Donahue passed legislation that called for my administration to present a standstill budget. Not a single member of the legislature voted against that proposal. Well, Senator, thank you for putting that plan forward. Honestly, I was very skeptical about how it would impact the services people rely on this state, but I know that you meant well by that proposal. Well, today, my proposal to replace a portion of the revenue that we are losing would be considerably less than a standstill budget proposal. So anyone who suggests that we are not living within our means, that spending is out of control, is simply ignoring the facts. And yes, time is of the essence. If we don't address the challenges before us during this special session, we risk slowing the momentum that we have gained in Louisiana. Our economy is improving. Since January 2016, Louisiana has attracted eighty-three major economic development projects that represent over $25.6 billion in new capital investment for our state. These project wins are attracting almost 20,000 new direct and indirect jobs to Louisiana, while also retaining more than 13,000 existing jobs. We landed the second-best economic development deal in the entire country last year with the announcement of DXC Technologies going to New Orleans, the largest economic development deal in our state's history, in large part because we finally stabilized funding for higher education. Unemployment has dropped to its lowest point in ten years, and more folks are out looking for and finding jobs than when we started this journey in 2016. And yes, there has also been wage growth. And I tell you, the growth of our civilian labor force, the measure of how many people are out there looking for jobs jumped from 50th in the country in 2016 to 25th in 2017. But while some people insist on painting a grim picture of our state's future, this is the reality. Louisiana ranks number five among the top states for doing business, according to Area Development Magazine. Louisiana ranks number four in this country amongst small-business-friendly states, according to Thumbtack, which actually gave Louisiana an A+ for its support of small businesses. And in keeping with our momentum, when it comes to transparency in state government spending, Louisiana ranks number seven in the entire country. I welcome transparency. I don't fear it. For years, I sat in this chamber, some of them right next to Thomas Carmody, others right next to Sam Jones, and I voted for numerous bills to add transparency to the Governor's office of the state of Louisiana. The only one to pass and become law was passed in 2015 because it became law at noon on January 11, 2016. So I've been living as the most transparent Governor in the history of the state of Louisiana. I do not fear it. These are all big steps forward, the kind of progress that people expect and should expect of us, and I know it's the kind of progress that the vast majority of you expect to continue. Quite simply, however, that can't happen if we allow ourselves to come anywhere near falling off the fiscal cliff. The budget I presented before you last month was not my choice, it was my obligation. And while the Constitution imposes on me that obligation to present a balanced budget, my moral obligation, not only to you but to the people of Louisiana, is to be honest about the situation we face and the choices that are before us. And we've been through this song and dance before. By now, the enormity of $1 billion in state general fund cuts should come as no surprise to any of you, because those cuts can only take place from the $3.4 billion of state general fund that are discretionary. And we all know that by law, there are only two main pots of money to cut from: higher education and health care. Precisely the two areas of government that people all across the state consistently tell me over and over again that they don't want to see cut. And while the majority of you agree that we need to address this problem now rather than later, there are still some who believe we should push this off until June. I want to reiterate what a disservice that would be to the people of this state who've elected us to serve. There are thousands of parents who lie awake at night waiting for us to act so they can prepare to send their kids off to college next fall. There are students currently on TOPPS and even more high school students who are about to start college who need to know what their tuition will be next fall and if they will have the support of TOPPS. For many of those students, that's the difference between staying in Louisiana or leaving. One of those students is with us today. Brenna Satterfield is a freshman majoring in Special Education at Southeastern Louisiana University. So please join me in welcoming Brenna and her mom Donna to the Capitol today. Last month, Donna sent me a message on Twitter. I'm speaking about that, Donna, over there. And that message speaks for a lot of students and families across the state. She said that Brenna turned down full scholarships out of state to stay here in Louisiana, but she was only able to do that because of her TOPPS scholarship. Well, I want every student in Louisiana to make the same choice that Brenna made. They should never have to second-guess that decision. I ran for Governor for a lot of reasons, but chief among them was this: if our young people decide they want to leave Louisiana for higher education, or to pursue a job or have a rewarding career, we should wish them well and hope they come back someday. But if they feel they have to leave, we have failed them, and we cannot fail Brenna and the thousand students like her who are begging us to act. And it shouldn't matter who gets the credit for funding TOPPS and higher education. We just need to get it done. If we wait to address the cliff, if we don't make it abundantly clear that the scholarships we promised our students are fully funded, we're going to start losing the incredible young people whose job it will soon be to carry this great state forward. And if we wait until June, our economy will take a hit too. The rating agencies that have downgraded our credit over the last several years and presently have us on a negative watch will again consider whether we will ever have a stable budget. Businesses are going to have to move forward as if the worst-case scenario is the only scenario. And that means organizations that provide essential health care services for some of our most vulnerable people will have to start laying folks off. Our partner hospitals, with thousands of private sector employees, would be forced to issue layoff notices because of this uncertainty. Just a few moments ago, I spoke with Kelly Monroe, the Executive Director of the Ark of Louisiana, who is with us here today. Kelly, would you please stand? Thank you very much for being here. As many of you know, the Ark has long provided support and personal care assistance for people with developmental disabilities and their families. They are one of the providers for our waiver services, many of which face elimination should the cliff not be fixed. Kelly showed me some sobering figures about what the potential cuts to health care would mean for the dedicated providers who care for our constituents with disabilities and their families. Fifty-five to sixty percent of the people they serve would lose those services, and approximately 2,000 employees would be laid off. That's over half the people they employ throughout the state, and this is just one organization in this state. There are many others that provide these services and have employees, and they will be similarly affected. These organizations and the fellow Louisianans they serve cannot wait to know if they have to lay off their workers, or in some cases, close their doors. We talk a lot about running government the way we would run a business. Well, no prudent businessperson would choose to wait. This can has been kicked down the road so far that the only place left for it to go is right off the cliff. There are thousands of families also at risk of losing critical services that help them care for a loved one and keep them at home. Mothers like Tina Haynes, who is here with us today with her daughter Karina. So I'd ask Tina, please stand, and Karina, thank you very much for joining us. Karina's ten years old. She receives a Children's Choice Waiver. Tina is a full-time working mom. She's got enough on her plate to worry about. She should not have to spend the next four months worrying if they're going to lose the services that help her care for Karina. the services that help her care for Karina while also providing for her family. And I can't imagine there is anyone here who would be okay leaving Tina and these other families in limbo. So we find ourselves at a crossroads. Do we continue down the path to prosperity that we are on, or do we needlessly put ourselves right back where we started? Do we stick with the status quo, or do we map out a new and better future for Louisiana? I am imploring you, let's turn this tide together. The breeze of hope that got us here today is still propelling us forward. We have to seize this opportunity. And I have told all of you, I am willing to be flexible. I stand by that today. My number-one goal is to put this problem behind us so we can get back to the business of making our state an even better place to live, to work, to retire, or to pursue an education. But I need you to follow through with your end of the bargain and work with me. My door is and always has been open. Over the last several months, I met with many of you to discuss our options and to outline my plan. That plan has been available to you and the public since early December. It calls for lowering the state's sales tax and implementing many of the reforms that your task force recommended. In a nutshell, I've given you your plan. Mr. Speaker, you put forth your own plan and ideas to help solve this problem, and I believe this is a good faith starting point, and I appreciate your willingness to work with me together on this issue. I recognize that these are tough decisions. This is not easy. This is hard. And the ability to compromise will be essential to our success. By definition, compromise means that you get some of what you want in exchange for accepting some of what you don't want. And I know that we are headed in the right direction if we can sit down, talk to one another, listen to one another, and reach that compromise, because we know what needs to be done. Economists after economists, task force after task force, over several decades and during Democratic and Republican administrations have recommended long-term solutions to our problems, and yet, up until now, we continue to ignore their advice. These experts, our experts, have been telling us over and over again how to pull ourselves up and out of this mess. We can take the best practices we see in neighboring states and implement them here in Louisiana. But we have to be more concerned with Louisiana's future than what score we might receive from a partisan political organization masquerading as a trade association. As Albert Einstein said, "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking we used when we created them." And we surely cannot afford to outsource our decision-making to the principal architects of the mess we are trying to clean up. For the next seventy days, I'm asking you not to think as Democrats or Republicans, but think first and foremost as Louisianans. We all want the same things. There's only one side to be on here, and that's on the side of the people of our great state who are tired of hearing about the same problems year after year with no resolution. Every decision we make should be focused on how it's going to impact our future, our kids' future. Louisiana is experiencing a surge of momentum right now that we haven't seen in a long time. All we have to do is work together and seize this opportunity to build a strong foundation for the future. In short, all we have to do is work together and put Louisiana first. I'm asking you to join me, and I know that together we can get this done. So God bless you, and God bless the great state of Louisiana and the United States of America. Let's get it done.
While we still have everybody together, speaking for me, he has two new members of the House of Representatives and the senators, which should like to meet them and say hello. Representative Ken Brass, Ken, raise your hand back. And Representative Mark Wright.